Christian.
Here.
Gurnett.
Here.
Gray is absent. Jerem.
Here.
Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Not so much that we need a moment of silence, but I think we could all take a moment to say thanks for this nice weather that we're having, and let's just enjoy it while it's here. Amen.
City Clerk's certified publication on data record on January 27th notes for a council regularly city council meeting, January 31st, 2012. A current copy of the Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Thank you.
Ordinance on second reading, Ray Bonds will take items five, six, and seven in one public hearing. Five is supplemental to ordinance number 35046 authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $3.4 million special tax revenue refunding bonds downtown northeast redevelopment project series 2012B refunding and redemption. Six is supplemental to ordinance number 35840 as supplemented by ordinance number 38029 authorizing and providing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $41 million special obligation refunding bonds riverfront redevelopment project series 2012. Seven is supplemental to ordinance number 35839 as supplemented by ordinance number 38028 authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $8,950,000 special tax revenue refunding redevelopment bond series 2012-A.
Public hearing on agenda items number five, six, and seven begin now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
This is just public hearing.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. These are financial items that oftentimes don't draw a lot of comments as evidenced by nobody speaking at public hearing here today, but I wanted to give Ms. Speckertella a chance just to explain what we're doing here because it is quite significant.
We'll get her.
I thought as far as I walked in, but if not, we can handle it as well. It's the Finance Committee taking the initiative here to look at our outstanding bonds and given the times and given historically low interest rates, refinance a number of bonds. And it's my understanding that these three items will save the city of Omaha and taxpayers about $8 million over the next 20 years. I see she is here now, so Ms. Speckertella, just wanted to give you a chance to talk about what you're doing here and the significance of the Finance Department's initiative here.
Sure. Pam Speckertella, Finance Director. Actually, the savings have improved as the market changes slightly, but we're refinancing about $79 million worth of riverfront redevelopment bonds, trying to take advantage of the lower rates that are being offered today. And by doing so, we're going to save the city approximately $10 million. And the present value of those savings will be $8 million, and that will go directly into the debt service fund that will help us in the future as far as making debt service payments.
That's great. Thank you. I commend you for taking that initiative and even am more happy to hear it went from $8 million to $10 million in the last few weeks. So we look forward to approving this next week.
And Pam, isn't it true that we're not extending the life of the bonds? I mean, we're remaining with the same number of years for the obligations, but just because of the lower interest rate? That's where the...
That's correct. The term of bonds is exactly the same.
Public hearing is closed.
Zoning ordinance on final reading plan for attachments, item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located at 819 South 7th Street from heavy industrial district area of civic importance overlay to central business district area of civic importance overlay. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed six to zero. We'll take items nine and 10 together. Nine is ordinance to rezone property located south of 8th and Pacific Streets from heavy industrial district with an area of civic importance overlay to high-density multifamily residential district with an area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 10 is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number nine and 10 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Doug Kellner, 10836 Old Mill Road. Thompson, Driesen, Doerner here for the applicant. They'll answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Christian, would you come up, please?
Christian, Blue Stone Development, 720 North 13th Street.
I think this is a good project for the neighborhood and took another council member by during lunch hour to show them what you were up to. And just because of the economic development project you have going here, the scope of the project, the type of market you're trying to capture in the rentals, the size of the building, I just thought if you could give us a brief synopsis, it's a good project that I think the public would benefit from knowing more about.
Yes. This land is situated next to a 38-unit townhouse development that we did that we sold out a couple of years ago. Previously on this site were three basically rundown homes. There was a warehouse that was being sort of partially utilized. We acquired the land when we were doing the townhouse development project. We didn't really have plans when we started acquiring it. We just wanted to buy more land in the area that we liked the area. At one point, we looked at doing some row houses, but we found out two things happened. The market changed, one, and our three-story product that we did down there didn't work as well as our two-story product. So we started working towards doing apartments. We realized the need for apartments down there when we were doing the townhouse development. People would come up all the time asking us, can we rent your townhomes? Can we rent your townhomes? Do you have anything smaller, anything smaller? So we started the design on this project last year. We've met numerous times with the city planning department to sort of work through. It's a 47-unit apartment project. We've met with Grace College. We've met with other employers. And our market that we're basically going after is anyone from 21 to 25 years old, probably work in the old market or live nearby and they want to be in something newer. Construction will start next month. It'll be done in December, and they rent for about average $800 a month.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your continued investment in that area, and it's well-needed, and thank you for that. So I would move to approve.
I was the other council member that went with Mr. Jerem, and we looked at the site today, and that's... And you did the homes that are on the south side.
Yes.
It even fits into the motif of the neighborhood, so...
And that's one of the things when we were working with the planning department, they were as interested, we were to make sure it ties in correctly because as any of these infill areas, one project comes in, that developer leaves, and another guy comes in and needs to blend so the next three guys that come in down the road, it's all done, it's cohesive.
Yeah, looks great. Thank you. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed six to zero. Item number 11, ordinance to rezone property located at 3454 Lake Street from CC Community Courser District to R7 medium-density multifamily residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed six to zero. Item, ordinance is on final reading plan for attachments, item number 12, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for West Dodge Station to allow the development of automotive dealership located at northwest of 180th Street and West Dodge Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Brinker Harding with Colliers International representing the applicant, 6464 Center Street. At this time, after some discussions at pre-council today and with Mr. Hogan who represents the property owner next door, we agreed to request a three-week layover. Understand that that falls on President's Day, so we will agree to a four-week layover. And maybe at this time, I'd like Mr. Hogan to come forward and maybe explain what will happen in the interim.
Dennis Hogan, Regency One Building. We represent the adjacent property owner, and as you know, we have some concerns about, not about this application, but just the change in the uses in the neighborhood. Our opinion is if the neighborhood's going to change, we should be allowed to change with it. So with a one-month layover, our commitment is that we will be working with a planner and architect to develop our own amendment to the master plan, come down, have a pre-app with the city, and move forward with that. Assuming that that is received by the city properly, then we have no opposition to this application. So... And we didn't to start with. So we concur that a four-week layover will allow us to move forward in that regard.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much for working with the council. We appreciate that. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
That's all right, Mr. President. Thank you. I appreciate the two businesses getting together and agreeing to go back to negotiating table and working together. Of course, the council is one of the parties in this, but a fourth party would be the city, particularly the planning department. So I'm hoping that in this four-week period, that the planning department becomes involved as much as they can to make sure that this is a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
So...
Do you want to continue the public hearing? It's been closed.
Yes, let's continue the public hearing because there'll be a lot of people needing this.
Okay.
Continue the public hearing and a four-week layover.
Right.
Till the 28th.
Yep.
Till the 28th. Can we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Laid over six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items 13 through 15 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 16, Nomad's Lounge, 1013 Jones Street. New application, no location change to stockholders. We have a request from the applicant to allow them to withdraw.
Roll call.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And withdraw on six to zero. Item number 17, The Gathering, 4809 South 72nd Street. Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is Gala Chambers, and I am the owner of GDC Inc. and The Gathering.
And your address, please.
Pardon?
Your address, please.
Oh, my address is 4809 South 72nd Street.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number 18, Omaha Liquors &amp; More, 5016 Grover Street. Package liquor license, new application, new location. You have communications from the applicant requesting an amendment to change the address to 5014 Grover, and you have a communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I am. My name is Suraz Adikari, and I'm the representative for GDC Inc.
And your address, please.
5016 Grover Street. 5014 Grover Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. So do we need a... Mr. Jerem.
This is District 3 just expanded to this address about a month ago or less. So it's new to the area, so I have a few questions for you. First of all, would you just tell us briefly what your operation will be and a little bit about yourself and your management abilities?
Well, it's a new startup. Basically, the idea came about because once I was in the area and couldn't buy a cigarette pretty easily, so I thought maybe I could try that. It's a startup company, and it'll be selling convenience store items mostly.
Okay. Now, with regard to your business, do you anticipate walk-in customers from the neighborhood or is it pretty much a drive-in and drive-out?
Walk-in customers.
So with regard to that area, right now, it's pretty neighborly, and there's not a lot of issues with litter and things like that. Can you tell me about what you'll be doing to patrol around your store and the parking lot to make sure that there's no litter?
Well, obviously, we're going to clean up the store around us. I mean, and we're going to try to stay clean, and a lot of those litter that's going to come around when, once we see it, and when we see it, we'll clean it up. But it's, I mean, it's probably not going to be litters that we're going to...
So will you do a daily sweep for...
For the inside store, yeah.
You're not going to allow any loitering or people congregating that are just hanging around?
Oh, no. This is strictly business. We intend to sell items and provide convenience.
Have you taken the Responsible Server Training Course through the state?
I have myself scheduled for UNO, the class on UNO.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
We need to approve the amendment. Thank you. It's change the address.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted as amended six to zero. Item number 19, Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar, 14615 West Maple Road. Request permission to appoint leash flower manager of their present class I liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Leah Fowler, General Manager of the 14615 West Maple Road, Suite 100.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Item number 20, Longhorn Steakhouse, number 5401, 3040 South 143rd Plaza. Request permission to appoint Michael Bodnar manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mike Bodnar managing partner. And it's 3040 South 143rd Plaza.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council, McCausen and I, have placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Should we approve?
The public hearings on agenda items number 21 through 26 were held on January 24th, 2012. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed six to zero. We're removing item number 31 from the consent agenda for the resolutions.
The public hearings on agenda items number 27 through 30 and number 32 through 36 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted six to zero. Item number 31 is resolution to the provisions of the Business Improvement District Act on the recommendations received from the appointed Dundee Business Improvement District Board. The city of Omaha Planning Department, the City Council of the city of Omaha hereby declares its intent to create Business Improvement District number 6876, and you have the Dundee Business Improvement District proposed work plan as A. We need a motion layover two weeks to February 14th for publication in public hearing.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a word of explanation to you, I were laying this over. So this is the new and expanded Dundee Business Improvement District we're working on as part of the $2.5 million business district renovation plan there. And it's significant in that it provides a mechanism for the merchants themselves to contribute to that plan and also provides a mechanism for ongoing maintenance of that plan once constructed, and some other important things like how they do snow plowing and holiday lights and flower baskets and things of that nature. The only reason for the layover today is that we need the public notification to catch up with the agenda item. It's on our agenda here today, otherwise approved by planning board unanimously and strong support from both the merchants and the neighborhood. So just wanted to have that notation of why we're doing this, and I look forward to addressing this resolution of intent in two weeks. So with that, I'll move the layover up two weeks.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Laid over two weeks, six to zero. Item number... Ordinance on final reading, item number 37, ordinance to approve the agreement with the Ultimate Baseball Academy to provide programming and management services for the city of Omaha softball facilities at Seymour Smith Complex and Kelly Complex. A and B are amendments.
Public hearing on agenda item number 37 was held on January 24th, 2012. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was a gentleman that was supposed to be here today that wanted the option to speak. His name would be Mr. King, Kerry King. Is he in the audience? And I'd like to invite you down now since you came a long way to speak, even though the public hearing was already over. But our procedure is you have to say your name and your address for the record, and then try to limit your comments to just a few minutes if you could.
Very much, I appreciate that. My name's Kerry King. Address 3930 Automation Way in Fort Collins, Colorado. And I do appreciate you guys making a moment here for me to speak. I understand that it's way past its deadline. We've been running a baseball tournament during the College World Series. The company I work for, it's called Triple Crown Sports, and it's called the Slump Buster, the event. It's been going on for 18 years now. 2011 saw an economic impact of $12.7 million, according to the National Association of Sports Commissions. It had 20,000 outside visitors at an average length of stay of three and a half nights and 23,000 room nights. So it's a big economic impact over the 18-year history, an estimated $122 million. We currently work in conjunction with many other city-owned facilities that are subleased out, just like these facilities here that are under recommendation. Triple Crown was notified this past December that the 12 fields that we've been using for 18 years, we no longer had access to. So that's the main dilemma. As of this morning, there's been a new revelation to meet today and actually discuss with Ultimate Baseball Academy this afternoon on renting the fields. Very good things have happened in the last 24 hours since I last spoke with Buster and Warren. But I do just want to bring to the forefront that if we were to lose these fields, the city would stand to lose potentially $3.1 to $4.7 million in economic impact due to potential loss of teams that are coming from outside the area. So in the future, we'd like to be considered for a potential citywide event, which is in negotiations with the Parks and Rec District. So just to get on record today, I'd like to just say those things, but we are moving forward with UBA right now to discuss a potential agreement in 2012 and going forward. So that's exciting news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for the record, before you leave the podium, we certainly appreciate your business, I mean, bringing this to the city of Omaha, and I think you better understand now that, you know, the access to the ball fields will not be jeopardized. We're just, we've just got a different vendor, and according to our acting director for the Parks Department, we're just trying to make it easier for you to do business with the city of Omaha. So...
That's very much appreciated, and I've kind of come to that understanding with the Parks and Rec Department, and I think we can have a really nice partnership in moving forward with the city, just as we do with the 10 other cities that we work with, Council Bluffs as far north as Blair, far south as Nebraska City, and all the way west in Lincoln. So we do operate with many cities in the area. The event is huge, obviously during a great time for you guys during the College World Series with a bunch of kids running around, so it's a fun event.
Just for the record, slump buster?
It is.
What's that?
Basically, a kid is able to take a wooden bat and put it into a fire, which we burn on a field, and he can get rid of his hitting slump, hence the slump buster name. And so it's a way to get rid of any kids that have a hitting problem there in the summertime. So it's part of the event we do besides just playing a baseball tournament. We have a specialty event that we produce over four different nights where kids are able to come together and jump on inflatables, trade pins, shake hands, and come together as a baseball community, not just as a competition, but as a fun moment to have everybody together.
I should have tried that during my career.
Brooke, do we need a special permit for the bonfire?
It actually is. We burn them in Council Bluff, so you don't have to worry about that.
Good answer.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnat.
Mr. Bench.
Brooke Bench, City of Omaha Acting Parks Director.
First of all, thank you for the memo of January twenty-six explaining all of this and clearing up a couple of items that seem to be a matter of contention at that particular moment. And now that has changed for the better. My question is, is that this is approved today, and the talks continue between Triple Crown and UBA. Parks and Recreation plays a part in those discussions. Is that correct, just for the record?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, just in case we have some questions from the general public, since there was some initial confusion. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
The amendments.
Amendments.
A and B. Yeah, together, we can do them.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President. Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed as amended, six to zero. Resolutions, item number thirty-eight, resolution, the amendment to Alkame Exarban LLC Tax Airmint Financing redevelopment project plan, as well as to approve the Georgetown Exarban LLC Tax Airmint Financing redevelopment project plan located at sixty-three forty-nine South Cedar Plaza, which proposes the construction of sixty-three new market rate apartment units and enclosed parking garages hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This particular project, the Georgetown Exarban project, is an amendment to the original Alkame Exarban project, of course, located within the larger Exarban Village redevelopment project area. This particular plan will, is a result, the amendment is a result of changes in the market, financial market as well as housing market. Original plan called for apartment units as well as twenty townhome units, which were for sale units and owner-type product. This particular plan, after the developer-owner has had a chance to reassess the market, has determined that there is a much stronger demand for apartments. So this particular amendment will bring on, reduce the twenty units of the original plan, and create a new plan to bring on sixty-three market rate apartment units at the Exarban Village to finish out this particular project. If there are any questions, I can answer them, and also the owner is here if you have any additional questions. Ask for your approval.
Thank you, Bridget. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes. Bert, would you come on?
Good afternoon. Bert Hancock, nineteen twenty-five South Sixty-Fourth Avenue, developer of the Georgetown Exarban LLC project.
Although this isn't quite the scale that you once hoped it to be, I think that from what people know about the Exarban area redevelopment, the projects that you've done so far there have been well-built, well-designed, and popular among the people you're trying to attract. And so I wanted to thank you for your continued investment, for sticking it out and finding a way to make this work in a very positive way. So thank you for your.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We're happy to add to the area. We're excited about Exarban Village and the growth that's happening there. So we like bringing in some more residents, so it's exciting. Thanks.
Thank you. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number thirty-nine, resolution attached Eighth Street Towns LLC Tax Airmint Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment project site located at Eighth and Pacific Street, contemplating the new construction of forty-seven unit market rate apartment building is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-nine begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This particular project is related to items eight through ten that were mentioned earlier. The Eighth Street Towns LLC TIF redevelopment project plan is new forty-seven market rate units that will be in the Little Italy neighborhood area. What was originally proposed for the area, as was mentioned earlier, were row houses due to changes in the market and also financing as well as the housing market. The owner has determined that this type of housing will fit. Planning has reviewed the designs, and we do feel like it's a great project. It adds to the area. It pursues the goal that planning has to help with infill and revitalizing neighborhoods. So with that, I would ask for your approval. And of course, the owner is here if you have specific questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number forty, resolution that the attached Garage Lofts LLC Tax Airmint Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment project site located at two oh-two and two sixteen North Nineteenth Street, providing the adaptive conversion and reuse of the garage structure to construct thirty-two loft-style apartment units for low-income housing is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. As Buster Brown just stated, the Garage Lofts TIF redevelopment project plan brings thirty-two loft-style housing units to the upper west, northwest area of the downtown area, again continuing to encourage revitalization of the downtown area and encouraging housing in that particular area. These particular units will be occupied by low-income housing individuals. This particular developer may be a little new to Omaha, but they are partnered with some very seasoned developers, New Style Development, co-manager, co-developers, also Holy Name Housing Community Corporation. So they are partnered with some great partners to help bring this project onboard. And with that, I'd ask your approval, and the owner is here if you should have any specific questions.
Thank you, Bridget. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number forty-one, resolution, City Council determines the wage claim of James Art for back pay is hereby denied.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-one begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number forty-two, resolution, City Council determines the wage claims of James Quates for back pay is hereby denied.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-two begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Will be approval?
Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule seven-eight, no meeting being held February twenty. First, agenda item numbers forty-three through forty-four shall be laid over four weeks for publication in public hearing. Ordinance on second reading, item number forty-five, ordinance claiming necessity of acquiring property for the purpose of the Martha Street area residential combined sewer separation.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item forty-six, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring private property for the purpose of constructing the intersection improvements for Eighty-Fourth Street where Eighty-Fourth Street intersects with L Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Forty-seven, ordinance approving agreement for the sale of city-owned real property to DaiCon located at three twenty-five South Sixteenth Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-seven begins now. Are there any proponents?
Roger Holdhouse, three nineteen South Seventeenth Street, Omaha. I just want to applaud everybody for moving this forward. From my grandstand view, from my ninth-floor apartment, the Orpheum Towers across the street, I can see everything that goes on there or does not go on. I think this is a great move to move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Randy Lenoff with Selden Company. I'm here to answer any questions about the developments.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just want to thank DaiCon and Seldens and everybody for putting this together and for investing in downtown. So wish you luck with the project. Thank you.
Item number forty-eight, ordinance approving agreement for the sale of real property to Habitat for Humanities of Omaha. It's thirty-seven oh-four, thirty-seven oh-six, and thirty-seven oh-eight Erskine Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item forty-nine, ordinance proving the execution of a professional service agreement with Electric and Gas Industries Association to provide home energy efficiency financing program administration and contract outreach and development for the re-energize program.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-nine begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number fifty, ordinance accept the bid of Dana Enterprises for dumpster services at District Two in the parks.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-one, ordinance to municipal code section six dash one sixty-two to modify the process by which a potential dangerous animal determination can be removed after expiration of two-year period.
Mr. Langdon, if you would come down, please. Mark is with the Nebraska Humane Society. And for the general public here, would you just kind of give us a brief summary of what the intention is for this new ordinance?
You bet. Mark Lang, Nebraska Humane Society, eighty-nine twenty-nine Fourth Street. We actually came up with this ordinance change a couple of months ago, and I appreciate Council of Mulligan for adopting it and moving forward with it. This ordinance in no way, this change in no way changes the potentially dangerous dog ordinance, the requirements or anything like that. When the ordinance was passed back in two thousand and eight, there was a caveat at the end that if your dog had been successful during the two years of being declared potentially dangerous, of having no dangerous incidents, biting anybody, attacking anybody, that you could apply to the Nebraska Humane Society, pay a fee of two hundred dollars, have a hearing with us, and if we verify that the dog had done nothing bad during that two years, the dog could be taken off that list. Since the ordinance now is over two years old, we've had probably four or five potentially dangerous dog owners contact us, and they're either upset at the two hundred dollar fee or they can't afford the two hundred dollar fee to apply to us to have that designation taken off their dog. We think it's a no-brainer to remove that fee. It's very little work on our part to check the record of the dog during that two-year period. We plan on checking our records, talking to the owner of the dog to verify the dog's had no incidents, possibly talking to neighbors in the area to verify the dog has not done anything bad during those two years. We can do that without the two hundred dollar fee. So we think it's a no-brainer, saves money for the citizens, makes it easier for the citizens to deal with us here at the Nebraska Humane Society. But again, I want to stress, it in no way changes the requirements of the potentially dangerous dog ordinance, mainly the harness muzzle requirement over once your dog's declared potentially dangerous and things like that. So we think it's kind of a no-brainer. We thank you for taking our idea, and we hope it passes.
Thank you. Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-one begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Ms. Stothard.
Mark, I just wanted to clarify. So now, basically, what the onus is on the Humane Society then? I mean, with the old method or the old procedure, the owner would have to come to you and request it and pay the fee. Now they don't have to come to you and request it. You check it out, and you automatically take them off the list. Is that right?
Yes. Once this ordinance is passed, I've established kind of a tickler system to keep track of when we initially declare a dog potentially dangerous. Two years later, we will be notified of that via our computer system. We'll then contact the owners, let them know that their dog has successfully completed two year, two years of not violating any of the dangerous dog ordinances or potentially dangerous dog ordinances. So we'll contact the owner rather than them having to come to us. And they don't have to pay the two hundred dollars.
And just approximately, how many dogs do you have on the list, say now, or annually?
The ordinance was enacted in October two thousand and eight, so we're three years into it. We have about two hundred-plus potentially dangerous dogs designated in the City of Omaha. So these are the dogs that have to be harnessed, muzzled, leash-to-an-off property. They have to buy a potentially dangerous dog license. They have to attend responsible pet ownership classes, dog behavior classes. It's pretty strict. And then we track all those dogs. And if the owners don't do what they're supposed to do, they become what's called reckless owners under the Omaha reckless owner ordinance. That's the severe one, when they then have to forfeit their animals to us, can't own animals for four years. We probably have, just off the top of my head, probably twenty reckless owners in the City of Omaha right now that legally cannot own animals because of their irresponsibility. So this, these ordinances are working very well. I don't know of any dogs that have been declared potentially dangerous of that two hundred-plus that have attacked anybody since they've been declared potentially dangerous. Most of the owners take it very seriously. They fulfill the requirements, and they keep their dogs from being in a position of possibly biting somebody.
Okay.
So they work real well, I think.
It just became cumbersome to do it the way that you have been doing it.
It wasn't so much cumbersome on us, it was cumbersome on the dog owner.
On the owner.
One, they had to come up with two hundred dollars, and many people have called us and said they can't afford to pay us the two hundred dollars, but their dog has been good during that two years, and they don't want to have to harness and muzzle their dog anymore, walking it down the sidewalk. I can see their point, but they can't afford the two hundred dollar fee to apply to us to have the hearing. We just think that two hundred dollar fee is really unnecessary. We can do the work for them, and we'll do a thorough job to make sure these dogs have done a good job over those two years. It's not just going to be a blanket, you know, rejection or denial or whatever. We'll do our job on it to make sure the dog successfully fulfilled that two-year period. If they have, we'll take them off the list. If they haven't, they stay on the list.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Gurnat.
Mark, it's possible that these individuals probably have spent that two hundred-plus more just to bring the dog and themselves into compliance.
Well, they definitely have, because they have to buy a hundred-dollar yearly potentially dangerous dog license. They had to attend the classes, which are about eighty dollars each. They had to microchip their dog, spear neuter their dog, things like that. So they easily spent over two hundred dollars during that two-year period bringing their dog up to code.
So slap them again, I can see it, definitely a no-brainer to get this off of the books.
And when we wrote those ordinances three years ago, and I know you're involved in that, at the time, maybe that fee appeared to be applicable, but.
You want to clarify that I was involved?
You were somewhat involved, but it was probably our idea, I'm sure. But now that we actually have people wanting to get their dogs off the list, we don't see a need for that two hundred dollar fee.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Item fifty-two, special ordinance laying special tax for condemned buildings and structures, group number two thousand and eleven dash one.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-two begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-three, special ordinance laying special tax for cutting, clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group number two thousand and twelve dash oh-four.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-four, special ordinance laying special tax for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group number two thousand and twelve dash oh-five.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Appeal or bid rejection, item number fifty-five, Midland's Computers appeals the rejection of their bid of December seventh, two thousand and eleven, for the lease of one hundred and seventy-five computers for OPD.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-five begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Thank you. William Bennett, operating officer for Midland Computer.
And your address, please.
Eleven zero eleven Q Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
Kind of a quick summary of what transpired. We submitted a quote for one hundred and seventy-five computers through a lease to Omaha Power District. And in that process, it was submitted, we were awarded the bid on an internal review. We had just missed one of the components that go inside the computer, a small card. And when that was brought to our attention, we submitted stating that, you know, it was an oversight. We answered by stating there'd be no change in the cost or quantity or delivery or any impact whatsoever on the power district. So with that being the case, we're begging that it would be accepted as an oversight, being that there's no impact on the city in any way, financially or in a time interruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Hi there. Michelle Sokup with Riverside Technologies. We are located one oh-seven forty-eighth Street in Omaha, Nebraska. We are the competing computer company that worked on the bid. And basically, you know, if it didn't meet bid specs, it didn't meet bid specs. It's kind of how it works. So our opinion is, if they get a second chance, we should get a second chance on price as well.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes. Just so the public understands how these work, Mr. Kratz, would you just take a minute to tell this publicly why it is where these technical procedures are so necessary? What happens if we were to award, accept the appeal and grant that?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. We do have a very specific process whenever we go out for bids on any item. They're written and published. They've been utilized for many years, and the purpose is simply to create an even playing field for everybody. If we allow exceptions here and there, then that playing field becomes uneven. We do have this bid process, or I mean, appeal process, excuse me, to forbid us to bring issues before the council, then it's for the council to decide whether or not to accept the appeal or to deny it. I believe the city's recommendation is to deny the appeal.
Mr. Gurnat.
Mr. Clerk, just for the record, this is a lease of one hundred and seventy-five computers for the Omaha Police Department of the Power District.
Yes, sir. Buster Brown, City Clerk, that's correct, sir.
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
The appeal has been denied, six to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda item fifty-six shall be laid on.